Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Monday, May 19th, 2025. Would a clerk please take the role?
Mr. Charlin? Mr. Coghill? Ms. Gross? Mr. Mosley? Mrs. Kail Smith? Mrs. Strasburger?
Here.
Mrs. Warwick?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Lavell President?
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. For those who are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, remain standing for a moment of silence. During our moment of silence, please keep in prayer our city clerk. Her father, Mr. Kenneth Johnson, passed away yesterday, so please hold her and her family in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend?
So move.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The agenda has been amended. Our next order of business is proclamations. We have three to be read into the record.
Councilperson Bob Charlin presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize May 17th as City Theater Day in the City of Pittsburgh. And Councilperson Bob Charlin also presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare, declare May 3rd, 2025 to be Mrs. Joan Smith Day in the City of Pittsburgh. And Councilmember Barb Warwick presents, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby designate the week of May 18th through 24th, 2025 to be National Public Works Week.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve?
To move. Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All three proclamations have been approved. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which may be before City Council. Profanity will not be permitted. After you recall, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Oakland and also Washington DC. American Chemical Society, American Physical Society, American Society for Microbiology member. I favor optimal information and intelligence for governance over everything. Global Intelligence Society candidate for President 2028. 412-969-7997. 24/7 for policy. CGSIi.rlm globalintelligence@gmail.com. A council concern is local government, and this is consistent with my 2028 Initiative Three, pro-local government primacy, and another council concern is with the vote, but it's unverified in this framework. This is inconsistent with my 2028 Initiative One, which is in favor of vote by voter verification for whom. My Initiative Three for local government, governance, formation using the best available information, verified information, and the highest level of intelligence is against using Democratic Party DP or Republican Party ideologies. The Pittsburgh DP versus DP competition for the DP mayor candidacy, in my view, is suffused with superficial, sordid, and stupid misinformation via what I consider to be yellow journalistic Katie Pixie Tay and Peep Pig in vulgar and vapid so-called debates. Please do not make the current claimant to US president the issue. Make the perceived racial or ethnic identities of the DP mayor competitors the issue, or make adherence to DP ideology, who is truest blue, the issue. I ask that you do, citizens and counselors, make your choice via an alternative. Ask yourself, who is of the two has a more soundly evidenced information base? And vote for that one. Who has a higher level of intelligence? And vote for that one. Who is more familiar with life in all nine districts, not just D6 to D7 for one, or District 5 to D7 Main Access for the other? Who is more likely to attract investment from institutions and individuals worldwide? Who is more able to communicate with people in all nine districts using Espanol, Xiongwen, Arabic, and other languages? Vote for that one. Who is more likely to understand scientific information and religious information that is very important to our people? And vote for that one.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Laura Toten Codori.
Good morning, Council. Thank you. My name is Laura Toten Codori. I am in the neighborhood of Allentown. I am here today in support of Ebony Lunsford Evans, better known as Farmer Girl Eb. Her work is invaluable to our community and our neighbors. Since 2020, she has grown and distributed over 12,000 pounds of food, with 5,382 of those pounds in 2024 alone. In the aftermath of the poorly managed Food Justice Fund and council's concern for food security, it would be a major disservice if this garden was allowed to collapse, and the city did not do everything in its power to sell the property at 1707 Fulton Avenue to Farmer Girl Eb, so that she can continue to do this work and teach future generations the value of growing our own food and creating our own food security. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Natalie Platt. I think that's Natalia. I apologize.
My name is Natia Platt, and I live in Sheridan. I am in support and in favor of Farmer Girl Eb, Ebony Lunsford Evans. She is a gem in our community, and if I could just tap into your heartstrings for a moment, she bridges the gaps. She brings together the elderly and the youth, and she causes them to work together. She educates the community. She is a gem. She is a help that is needed in the community, where people know her, where people are familiar with her. She can speak to them, and they feel like they are heard. They feel like they are recognized. She is essential in our neighborhoods. There is no one else who is advocating and fighting for the community like she is in this manner. This farm makes a difference to those in the surrounding communities, for those who are in lack, for those who do not have. These are the people that she is reaching out to. And not all of them are people who do not have. Some of them are retired. Some of them are people who are in need of something to do, something to keep their minds sharp, something to keep them vibrant and in motion. And this is a necessity in our community, because we need our elderly and we need our youth. And she is the one who's bridging the gaps. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Felicia Robinson. I do not see her online. Is Felicia Robinson with us? If not, our next speaker is Jody McLaughlin.
Thank you. My name is Jody McLaughlin, and while I am not a resident of the City of Pittsburgh, I serve on the Pittsburgh Food Policy Council Board of Directors with Ebony Evans. I am here today to speak in support of Ebony's work in Manchester and request that Mayor Ganey take action to ensure the land currently being used by Food for the Soul Community Farm be sold to Ebony Evans. At the very least, I request that any decision-making regarding the future of these tracts of land be paused until the City of Pittsburgh, the URA, and the Pittsburgh Land Bank clear up the discrepancies with the Adopt-A-Lot, Farm-A-Lot, and the 2023 Tri-Party Agreement. Ebony has worked this land since 2020 and donated more, well, more than several thousand pounds of food to the Manchester community. In addition to Ebony's personal investment, Food for the Soul has been invested in by the Manchester community via their Sweat Equity and Grow Pittsburgh with its multi-year new garden program. Why would anyone invest so much time, money, energy, and love in creating such a space if the expectation was that it would end at the end of a three-year lease? According to the 2023 Tri-Party Agreement, any Pittsburgh Adopt-A-Lot current as of this enactment date of this that it is transferred to the Pittsburgh Land Bank will be disposed of to the current leaseholder. Ebony is the leaseholder, and she has been clear that she wants to keep farming with Manchester residents, using this incredible site that they have created together. Urban agriculture has been identified as a multi-factor investment for communities, particularly for the divested communities like Manchester. Research has shown community gardens and urban farms increase property values. Public health researchers have also identified that these spaces contribute to the reduction in gun violence and other crimes. This is largely in part of community members feeling safer when they are outdoors, which in turn increases outdoor exercise, which can lead to a reduction in chronic disease and improved mental health. Goal Three of the Manchester Chateau Plan clearly indicates a need to increase access to healthy food and community support services. It can take a long time to make these plans become a reality. Therefore, while we've been waiting, the residents of Manchester have embraced people like Lisa Freeman and Ebony Evans as they have stepped up to increase access to healthy food and support services. Why undo the good work people like Ebony are undoing? Community for the Soul will have a more substantial impact on Manchester than a couple of single-family homes. Please do what is right. Let Ebony buy this land. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kent Bay. He's not online. I do not see him. Our next speaker is Patrice. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Patrice Balamope, and I stand here today in strong support of keeping our urban farm, because it's more than a patch of green in a city of concrete. It's a lifeline. I'm also an urban farmer and share the same mission as Ebony and many of my colleagues that are here today. We live in a community that struggles with food insecurity every single day. Too many families here rely on corner stores and fast food, not by choice, but because healthy, affordable options are simply out of reach. The urban farm, Food for the Soul, changes that. It grows real food, fresh fruits and vegetables that nourish our children, our elders, and our neighbors. It shortens the distance between farm and fork, making healthy food accessible and affordable. But this farm does more than feed bodies. It feeds hope. It teaches our youth how to grow their own food, offering jobs, skills, and a connection to the land many have never known. It turns vacant lots into thriving ecosystems. It brings people together, black, brown, white, young and old, in shared workspace and purpose. This is about justice. It's about giving this community the same right to fresh, healthy food that wealthier neighborhoods take for granted. Removing this farm would be taking a step backward, erasing progress that has taken years to build. We cannot let short-term thinking or outside development erase a vital resource. Instead, we should be replicating this model and not replacing it. And I'm in the Allentown community. I forgot to say that. So thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brandy O'Allen.
Good morning, and thank you for your time. My name is Brandy Allen. I'm a mother, educator, a nutritionist, and a doula. I also sit on the Board of Directors for the Pittsburgh Food Council. I'm here today to speak on behalf of the Manchester community regarding the proposed closure of the neighborhood urban farm 15233 Food for the Soul Community Farm. As an educator and a doula, I firsthand see how lack of proper nutrition and food can be detrimental to growing up healthy and productive. Manchester is one of Pittsburgh's most underserved areas, facing longstanding issues with food apartheid, where access to fresh, affordable, and nutrition, excuse me, nutritious foods is severely limited. The urban farm in our community is not just a green space. It's a lifeline. It provides free and low-cost produce to residents, many of who live below the property line. It fills a gap where the grocery stores and fresh food access are nonexistent. Closing this farm will be a devastating blow. It means taking food off the tables of seniors, families, medically disadvantaged, and children who are already struggling to eat well. It means removing a source of dignity, empowerment, and health from neighbor, excuse me, from a neighborhood that has fought hard to have every resource that it has. Ebony Evans has spent a lot of her own money, time, energy, sweat, and tears to ensure not only Manchester eats, but Pittsburgh eats. Over 33% of black residents in the region are food insecure. That's one-third, and I know that that number is highly not purported, excuse me, reported correctly. Manchester is a black community. I urge you that you reconsider in a time where food insecurity is rising, supporting this farm is not just the right thing to do, it's the moral and public health imperative thing to do. People of a profit. I'm from Mount Oliver. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Julia Thomas. I do not see her online. Is Julia Thomas? If not, our next speaker is Ashley Wright. Ashley Wright? No. Our next speaker is Kiara Williams. Kiara Williams. If not, our next speaker is Stephanie Elam. Our next speaker is Nikki Jo Dawson. I do not see online. I do not see her with us. Our next speaker is Rakhi Bay. Who is not online. I don't see her in the audience. Our next speaker is Anthony White.
Good morning. My name is Anthony White. I'm from the Northview Heights area. I'm here in support of Ebony and her farm. What she's doing is for people like me. I have no idea about how it works. I have no idea the importance of it. I don't have an idea of how it affects people around the community and also involved in the community. But from watching her on Facebook and seeing what she does personally with the young and the old, and you know, she's like one of us for all of us. And I feel like if y'all take that away from her, like, my ignorance will continue. I have children that need to learn how to, you know, understand the importance of land and understand, you know, the connection to it and the value of eating healthy. And without these kind of institutions, starting right now, like, we'll probably never get that information. So like, you'll be doing a harm to a lot of people who need her to be inspired to even want to know what that's about and even be a part of it. This is probably my second time ever being in this building. And it's like, you know, her and what she striving and do and what she posted online affected me so much that I felt like I needed to be here to speak about her plight in some kind of way. You know, I don't have the logistics of how this goes or who it affects or the numbers and percentages. I just know that it's needed. And I had seen a post where she had all the kids together, and I smiled at that. You know, I thought that was amazing. Like, wow, these little kids can possibly change the way everything is going. And maybe we could make eating the right foods cooler, you know? So I feel like if y'all don't, you know, help Ebony acquire this land that she needs, like, it's going to hurt a lot of us. Anthony White from the Northview area. Thanks. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jamie Christian.
Good morning. My name's Jamie Mary Christian. I'm the founder and executive director of an organization called Let Us Turn Up the Beat Sustainability Collective, and I'm also a displaced urban farmer. I'm here to speak in favor of Ebony Evans being able to purchase the property in Manchester where Manchester One Sound Farm is. I've been here many, many times, probably more than anybody else in this room, supporting urban farmers getting, you know, with the land bank, being able to buy the property that they're leasing, and also with the Food Justice Fund, you know, getting funding for farmers. We don't have funding right now through the USDA. Everything is on hold, and y'all are aware of this. It's very difficult to get any type of funding for growing food that's not being, just to distribute, but also any other type of food access work at this moment. So, you know, Ebony's been there for such a long time that, you know, the, I mean, I've repeated this repeatedly, but the statistics show that you are 236% more likely to develop a mental health disorder if you are experiencing food insecurity. The soil remediation that has been done there, by destroying that soil, you are killing the microbes in that soil 300 miles across the surface and also two miles down. That impacts your physical health. It impacts your mental health. I'm going to reflect upon a conversation that I had with Eb when we were sitting at Lisa Freeman's place last summer. She was telling me about how one of the guys from the Salvation Army and some of the folks from Light of Life, when they're working in the garden, they just start crying. That's a trauma release. I've experienced that myself. When I started my organization in 2015, I had lost a child the year before. That was my outlet. That's what got me through. That is the only time of my life that I never did not want to exist, and the thing that saved me was being able to go to that garden every single day and work with those kids. The same thing when my dad passed in 2016. By taking away that farm from Ebony and the work that she is doing, you are doing a huge disservice to the folks in your community that need you the most. Now, my path as an urban farmer is different. I'm not using the land bank. We had an issue with a landlord not taking care of mold, and I have suffered physical health issues, but also I can't grow anything there anymore. And I was just told, you're better off getting out. Well, good luck trying to find a place that I can afford to grow indoors right now, because it's not happening. So, you know, you are elected by your communities to do what is best for them. Keep that in mind. Thank you. Be well.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ebony Lunsford Evans.
Hi, my name is Ebony Lunsford Evans, and I'm here representing the community of Sheridan and Manchester. Well, first of all, I'm surprised to be here, and I'm thankful to be here. I want to thank you all, because in early March, I received a call from City Planning, and to my surprise, I was so excited to learn that, that the mayor and city planning was supporting the sale of the Manchester Food for the Soul Community Farm. And I was super excited and told to reach out to the land bank, and the land bank was ready for the application to come through. And I did exactly that. And then I was, I was met with a message from Sally at the land bank to let me know that she wanted to meet with me before my application was complete, completed. It was surprising to me, because I am in, in the process of purchasing a few properties from the city, and I'm, I'm thankful for it, but, or from the land bank, I'm sorry. And it was, it was different for me, but I was happy to meet with her, because I wanted to make sure that we were on the same page. And also, I'm happy for the guidance to be able to do exactly what I'm supposed to do, to purchase. And when I met with her, I was met with a lot of guidance of telling me what, what I should do to purchase and the support that I would be needing would be different from the support and things that I'm doing for the other applications. And I was found with that, and I listened. And, and I walked away excited and doing everything I needed to do to get my application together. And was just also met with the reason to know that the votes are already in to not accept my application through the land bank. And it's leading me to believe that this is just super personal, you know, what is going on. I shouldn't have to, you know, be excited one minute doing all of this, only to know that, you know, personal things are going on. And it's, it's, I don't know if it's decided through the committee, through the land bank, to just not sell it to me what's going on. And so I'm coming back to my city council, to my mayor, and I'm asking you all to help me. Let me purchase this property, and it's not for anything for profit. This is all nonprofit. I have lots of support behind me. I have lots of support out in the community, from, from youth to seniors to the homeless, everything. I do not want to be pinned up against affordable housing. I come from the projects. I come from Northview Heights. We come from not having. I need affordable housing. I'm, I'm learning more and more about affordable housing, but I shouldn't be pinned up against affordable housing. We, we need it. When we, when we started, if I would have known that this was slighted to me that, then we wouldn't be there. But that just is not the case, and we have been there for five years, remediating, planning, doing, community. These people right here didn't know each other before that, but we meet each other on that farm every Thursday, every week, and we work. And there's been over 12,000 pounds of food that has been grown and given away on this space. I'm asking my city to please help me. Please talk to the mayor and sell this property. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw Rakhi Bay has joined us online, so I want to go back to Rakhi Bay.
Good morning, esteemed city council members. Thank you for this time. Let me start off by saying Malcolm X would have been 100 today. And because of that, we say, free the land, free the people. I'm Blackweed. I'm the executive director of the Black Women Gardeners and Farmers of Pittsburgh that started 10 years ago. And the reason we did this is because of disparities that growers face here in Pittsburgh. Now, speaking of that, as we all know, black women in Pittsburgh have the poorest chances in any other city. That includes maternal health, education, finances, and so forth. However, there are those of us who have done work to ratify this. Carnegie Mellon University Center for Shares Prosperity and our esteemed Mayor Ganey created an equity group for black women. But unfortunately, this is just how white supremacy works, and here I am having to address this. I don't use the word racism. I use white supremacy because it encompasses everything, from the African slave trade. We would have been sold out if other Africans didn't sell us out. From slaves running away, where other slaves were tailed during the 60s, co-intel pro, where the government used other black people to infiltrate organizations that was helping other black people. To nowadays, genification, and it can only start on the inside. And genification is inequable and unfair development without community support. And that's what's happened to Ebony, not being able to purchase her land. It is a form of genification and white supremacy. Yes, it's for affordable housing, but food sovereignty is more important than anything, because we all have to eat. Even unhoused people have to eat respectfully. The United Nations came up with a solution, and they said that food is a human right. Two countries did not agree, Israel and America. Speaking of, as of Friday, 45 children were killed in an air raid by Israeli forces. This is a woman who has helped our community, who has helped children learn to grow food. Our government, unfortunately, is falling in an unjust deadly arena by not recognizing food as a human right. This is a principal issue, and it's trickling down to our beloved city here in Pittsburgh by not allowing Ebony to buy her land. Everyone has a right to eat. And I believe also this is a conflict of interest, because the person in question who wants to come is the president of Planning Commission on the Zoning Board and ED of the RCO MCC. All right? Moving forward is important.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Abdul Kadir Cherumbo.
Thank you. My name is Abdul Kadir Cherumbo, and I live in Northside, Northview Heights. I'm also a part of the urban farmers community or organization. I'm here to support Ebony, because I do have the same issue that she's struggling with. And I don't know, it feels like I'm in Africa, because this is a country who has a good constitution. And today, we should argue more on how to instructure the rules and regulations that we have of food policy, but we are- we have of food policy, but we are arguing about a lot of injustice stuff, which is everyone have the right to eat and everyone have the right to educate and everyone has the right to go to work. And that's what I believe as Abdul Kadir Charambo. So today, we're having challenge for Ebony not having the space that she's teaching the kids. The, the space that she's teaching the immigrants who never have a farm, the space that, you know, welcoming people, the space that can support any other to save life. And I don't know why we don't understand that part. I just don't know why we don't understand that part and, but Ebony has, Ebony has been trying a lot by welcoming the people who surround in the urban farm area, educating and supporting any other things, even food in a plate. So I will stop there, but we do need this struggle to end. This is not the first day, this is not, and it shouldn't be the last day either, but we need this to be solved in all of our urban farmers. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sarah Williams. You just need to take yourself off of mute. There you go.
Sorry. I thought you guys had to do that for me. Hi, my name is Sarah Williams. I am in Sheridan. Ebony has a farm in Sheridan as well as the one in Manchester. And I just want to say that she's wonderful and the work she's doing is wonderful and we need it. Regardless of what anyone intended for this property at any point in time, the decision was made to lease to a farmer who came with long-term plans to feed our community and the intent to build something permanent for our community. And she has. Her commitment and efforts to provide food and show people how to grow their own have proven their worth over and over again. She's doing things for us all in a way that no one else is by bridging generations, neighbors, and rivers to bring us together. There's been ample time to come up with a Plan B for affordable housing in the area that doesn't involve destroying an invaluable community resource that's become a staple provider of fresh food and education for all of us. The fact that any person in this room has had the gall in a city teeming with city-owned vacant lots and blighted properties to try and pit fresh food and education for our community versus affordable housing in some kind of manufactured Hunger Games scenario is both appalling and inexcusable. There's an abundant amount of space for all of the above and even more things that we need and want. We moved here four years ago from Seattle and I've seen firsthand what happens when conflicts of interest overtake a city and development runs rampant over resources, people, and property. Let's not be like Seattle. Let's be better. Let's be way better. We don't have to choose between food and housing. We have everything we need to do both and more. So let's save, let's do it. Let's save Food for the Soul Community Farm in Manchester and create the housing we need. This is not a mutually exclusive thing. Please sell the property to Ebony Lunsford Evans. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Divana Everhart. Do not see her online. Our next speaker is TJ Johnson. Also not online. Our next speaker is Kirsten Ragland Smith. Our next speaker is Ashley Cooper.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Hello, my name is Ashley Cooper. I am from the north side of Pittsburgh. I currently live in Monroeville. I want to start off by saying that I do not know Ebony, but she has a huge influence online in terms of the importance of fresh grown produce for our community. Ms. Evans has not only worked her land with integrity and care, but she's also contributed in countless ways, providing fresh local food, supporting local jobs, and representing a legacy of resilience and perseverance. Her farm is more than just a business. It's a symbol of independence, tradition, and hope. One of the many things that sets Ms. Evans apart is her deep commitment to community engagement. Her farm provides meaningful volunteer opportunities for people of all ages, from students earning service hours to seniors looking for connection, to families wanting to teach their children the value of hard work and healthy food. These opportunities are not only enriching, they're vital. They strengthen community ties, offer education and empowerment, and foster a sense of ownership and pride among those who take part. We often say we value local agricultural food security and diversity in our community. This is the time to put those values into action. Supporting Ebony means preserving not just a farm, but a part of our community's soul. Black farmers like Ms. Ebony have faced a long history of discrimination and displacement in this country. Allowing that to happen again here now when we have the power to do otherwise would be a failure of our responsibility as neighbors and citizens. I urge the city to do everything within its authority to support Ebony Evans in keeping her land, whether that means adjusting zoning, offering financial support, or helping to resolve disputes. Her continued presence and leadership are not just wanted, they are needed. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Derek Bryan Jones.
Yes, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much. Good morning, dear and respected council members, neighbors, and community peers. I'm Derek Jones from the Allentown neighborhood. I'm speaking in support of the efforts to work out the allowance for Farmer Girl Eb to buy the property she's been working on for five years. Happily, it's been said better by others already, so that makes it a bit simpler for me, but adding to it some is pragmatics. A five-year track record of progress and investiture, community connections, is weighty enough to be considered. And my understanding is that the, the properties are being slated to be repurposed for affordable housing. I have an urban planning landscape architecture background. If, if the plan includes having affordable housing in the area, I mean, it's odd to not have the option to have a convenient nearby garden that could be enjoyed by the residents of the affordable housing. Basically, I'm advocating for significant focused on thought on the, the situation and the aspects and the fact that any good plan can be revised and updated to do, to do better. And the agreement that was proposed and the setup that began, it is one of the worst things a community can, a community can do to its members is to disenfranchise, demean, or leave them lost for no, no good reason. I know there's going to be lots of conversations to try and figure this out further. I'm basically saying, you guys, it can be done well and it can be done better, it can be done best, and give it the time and the thought. And I'm so glad for all the people who've spoken already because they've covered the vast majority of things that needed to be brought to attention. Again, I, I thank our city council member representatives. I thank the neighbors, community peers, and I wish you all a lovely day and a wonderful week. Peace.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tanya Foster.
Good morning, everyone. I am here today to speak on behalf of Ebony Evans, or what some may know her to be as Farmer Girl Eb. I could stand here today and tell you how we have been best friends since the sixth grade. I could tell you how I've watched her overcome adversity, succeed against all odds, and how she deserves everything good in this life, but I won't. I would, however, like to share this with everyone. After graduating college with her bachelor's and master's degree, Ebony and her husband could have left Pittsburgh and raised their family elsewhere. Ebony could have taken her knowledge, her drive, and determination and shared it with the community in another city within another state. However, she chose to become a teacher within the Pittsburgh public school system. After working there for over a decade, she moved to a different organization, but still had a passion to educate children, where she continued to teach, encourage, and empower them within this city. After some time, Ebony decided that she was going to step out on faith and pursue the purpose that Christ had put inside of her. Over the last six years, I have watched her guide, influence, and inspire others within the city of Pittsburgh. I have watched her selflessly give herself and her time without asking for anything in return. Although there are others in this city that provide the same expertise, if you will, I believe that Ebony is a catalyst for the shift within the black and brown community as it pertains to growing food and sustainability. In regards to the Food for the Soul Community Farm, some people may just think that this is just a quote-unquote little garden or a place where people just to come play in the dirt. It is, of course, way more than that. It is a space that has provided thousands of pounds of free food to the community. It is a safe space that the youth and adults from all walks of life can come and be welcomed, supported, and uplifted. It is a place of healing and restoration for so many people. It is a community. Taking this place would be detrimental to Manchester as a community itself and to the people that live within it. Ebony has given so much to the city of Pittsburgh. I think it's time for the city of Pittsburgh to do what is right and allow the Food for the Soul Community Farm to remain in place and let it continue to benefit the community that it resides. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nichelle Killer. Is Nichelle Killer with us? Then our next speaker is Letitia Branch Knalls.
Good morning. My name's Letitia Branch Knalls. I am located in the Sheridan community and I am here to express my full and heartfelt, heartfelt support for my best friend Ebony Evans. She is the CEO of Out of the End Incorporated and founder of Farmer Girl Eb, as she seeks to retain the property currently home to the Food for the Soul Community Farm located at 1707 Fulton Street, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, 15233. This is not just a property, it is a mission and a motion. It is living, it is a living example of what happens when visionary leadership meets tireless action in the service of a community. I've had the privilege of witnessing the formation of this organization from the ground up. I've seen Ebony show up day after day with no promise for profit or praise, committed only to the well-being of the community. She is more than a CEO, she is a steward of the land and a protector of the people who depend on it. Through her leadership, Food for the Soul has become a safe space for families, seniors, and children, a place where they can access free, fresh, and healthy food in a time when food insecurity continues to rise. Ebony is also the owner of Farmer Girl Eb, a local business rooted in urban agriculture and food justice. Through this initiative, she has educated countless individuals about growing their own food, understanding nutrition, and building sustainable systems that allow communities to take care of themselves. Her knowledge and grassroots experience make her one of the most credible and qualified leaders in this space. The Food for the Soul Community Farm is not just feeding people, it is transforming lives, helping families annually with no-cost produce, workshops and training sessions for organizations like the Light of Life and other nonprofits, volunteer opportunities for residents fostering pride and ownership in the community. To consider displacing this space for affordable housing in a neighborhood where homes are selling 500,000 plus is to ignore what's truly affordable and necessary. How is it affordable to remove access to free food? How is it affordable to eliminate a teaching hub that costs the city nothing but gives such much in return? The true cost of this decision will be a loss of health, education, and equity for an entire neighborhood. As Isaiah 58:10 reminds us, "If you spend yourselves in behalf of the hungry and satisfies the needs of the oppressed, then your light will rise in the darkness and your night will become like noonday."
Thank you very much. Thank you. Your time has expired. Thank you, though. Our next speaker is Keisha Bennett. Is Keisha Bennett with us? If not, our next speaker is Brenda Simpson.
Good morning. I apologize for the dark glasses. I'm just coming from my eye exam, so I'm having problems. But I'm here as a volunteer for the Food for the Soul up under the leadership of Ebony, Farm Girl Ebony. As a volunteer of five years, I've held, I have learned so much from her, things that I weren't really interested in as far as growing food and planting different things and learning about how to grow to healthy food, just to do naturally. Ebony has taught me a lot. And not only has she taught me, she has enriched our community by opening up this farm where everyone is welcome regardless of who they are, the ages that they are, whatever to come in. She's been a source of knowledge to a lot of different people. She brought a community together because we fellowship on there as well as learning about growing things. She has people from the Light of Light missionary coming there, which is helping them, the Salvation Army, those men come and they help us and we help them. So this is a benefit to our community. This is a benefit that reaches out to everyone because you could come from all over and get this education free and not only education, but healthy food. And this is what we need because it's not always accessible financially for those in our community and other communities. So to lose this area and to lose all of these benefits would be a tragedy. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dana Doni.
Hello, council. I want to stress today, because you've seen me many times before coming here to talk about food access, that I am here as a resident of Pittsburgh, Polish Hill today, as an individual, as a friend of Ebony Evans, and also as a volunteer for many years. So this is personal and this is going to be hard to be not emotional because I'm really here to talk to you, Mr. Lovell, Councilman Lovell. Because for years, I've worked in this community alongside all of these wonderful people and I've not seen you. I've not seen you on the farm. I've not seen you on the farm in your own district. I'm hoping you're getting an education today? That all of these folks had to give up what they had to do today while you're getting paid to do this? Okay? Because I've not seen you. I've not seen you at Ms. Lisa's. I've not seen you on the farm. I've not seen you show up for food access in your own community. I've, I've heard from all of them over years, the complaints, the need in a food apartheid community for fresh grown food. I have watched for years the leadership developed from these strong women. I am so proud of these women. I have used these women and these farms as examples for years on how to do this right. And there is a threat to destroy this for affordable housing? You should be ashamed of yourself because that is not true and I know it's not true because I spent years researching it. And before, conveniently this last year, there was no affordable housing on that site. There were 30 lots that were up for grabs for you to put a modular home into and that's the truth. You need to talk to your city planning, you need to talk to the people because you are looking very bad, all of you right now. And I will get to the bottom of this and I will not have shame because I work for no one right now except for this community. And I am going to stand with them to the very end. This community is not going to let this farm go away. You need to know that. I think you're getting an idea today. We are not going to let this community lose this farm. Come, spend a day, learn what this is about. It is not just about food. This is an ecosystem. This community has had decades. You are taking away a memorial space, a green space, a park. Decades this has been farmed. You are taking away dignity. You are taking away pride. How dare you make this community come here again? I know Teresa knows. I know you know what she does. I'm not here yelling at you today. I'm not here yelling at you. I'm not here yelling at you. Bobby, where are you?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Regina Platt. Is Regina Platt with us? If not, our next speaker is Darisa King St. Felix.
Good morning, council members. My name is Darisa King St. Felix, community steward and women's health leader of Pittsburgh, representing East Liberty. Today, I speak for Ebony Evans. But the community knows her as Farmer Girl Eb, the heart and hands behind Food for the Soul, a community garden and farmer's market that has educated and healed hundreds right here in Pittsburgh. Ebony stands before you today, not just a farmer, but as a steward of the land that has become a sanctuary. What began as an empty lot transformed into a thriving space where children learn how to grow their first tomato, where adults in recovery reconnect with purpose through their hands in the soil and where elders come, not just for produce, but for peace, y'all. This land doesn't just grow food. It grows hope. It grows health. It grows connection. And now, it's at risk. I'm asking the city of Pittsburgh to sell this land to Ebony Evans so we can secure it permanently for the people who depend on it, for the parents who rely on our market to put fresh food on the table, for the kids who need green spaces to dream in, for the volunteers in recovery who say this garden has saved their lives. Food for the Soul is not just a project, baby. It's a promise. A promise that no matter your background, income or struggle, you deserve access to fresh food, healing spaces and knowledge to grow your own. With your help, this land can remain sacred ground for growth, not development. Let's preserve what's already working. Let's keep feeding bodies and souls. Let's keep the garden in the hands of the people. As we stand in front of you today, one day we all may leave this earth that we try and to protect and preserve. You will one day stand in front of someone who will make the decision for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tiara Collins. Our next speaker is Sarah Baranckis.
Hi, my name is Sarah Baranckis, Stanton Heights. I work for the Pittsburgh Food Policy Council and started volunteering with the Food for the Soul Community Farm back in 2022 when my daughter was six months old. She's now two and a half and we're still talking about this. Back in the summer of 2023, when a tri-party agreement was being finalized between the URA, the Land Bank and the city of Pittsburgh, growers and advocates were here in the same room highlighting challenges for land acquisition, for ownership, for urban agriculture in the city and for urban agriculture to be a priority use for land. We've met with the mayor's office, council members, staff at the Pittsburgh Land Bank and staff at city planning about Food for the Soul Community Farm specifically. I want to acknowledge that there are staff at the city who are dedicated to this issue, who've committed time and effort and have come to the table. But I also want to acknowledge, despite these conversations, we're nearing the end of Eb's lease for the farm and she's still unable to purchase the parcels that she has stewarded and she has no confirmation she'll be able to continue doing her good work. Urban farms provide community spaces, nutrition education and healthy food access points for communities across the city. Food for the Soul Community Farm is a labor of love. What Eb has done to grow community and grow food is not easy. It's been her time, her resources, other organizations' resources and efforts. It's not an easy task. And if the city council and the mayor are committed to making Pittsburgh the best city it can be, can start by providing support and protecting initiatives like Food for the Soul and for people like Ebony. The community of organizations that support urban agriculture in the city have repeatedly asked for transparency in decision-making, support for growers who put in their time and energy and resources, and a clear pathway to long-term ownership. We've all watched the can get kicked down the road for this farm as we receive opaque and confusing responses about why it's not yet under Ebony's ownership. The clock is ticking and Eb has done everything that has been asked of her. This is not complicated. There is plenty of land and this land is best suited for the farm that is currently operating on it. Prioritize the sale of the land currently used by Food for the Soul Community Farm to Ebony Lunsford Evans so that she can continue her incredible work.
Our next speaker is Dawn Marie Klepper-Hall.
Good morning. My name is Dawn Marie Klepper-Hall and I currently live in the Mon Valley. But I am the Director of Community Food Access at Just Harvest and I am on the Board of the Pittsburgh Food Policy Council. When I was thinking about what I wanted to say to all of you today, I thought about how I could speak about how important this farm has been to the community and to my own experience sitting with Ebony and learning about the farm's importance to the neighborhood while I ate ground cherries out of a raised bed during the urban farm tour last year. I thought about how I could speak to you about how I used Ebony's children's book to teach my nephews how to grow tomatoes, which is something my grandfather knew but got lost before it got to me. I could speak to you about how Ebony provides not only produce in the West End and in Manchester, but also to 10 other communities experiencing food apartheid as a partner of our Fresh Corners program. But what I actually want to talk to you about, I think, is that the city of Pittsburgh keeps asking me the same questions and ignoring the answers. Less than three weeks ago, the Department of City Planning had a meeting with me and a few of my colleagues at Just Harvest to talk about what we can do for food access. What can the city be doing differently? How can we work food access into the comprehensive plan? A topic that was added to the comprehensive plan, sort of as an afterthought, well after community meetings had gotten underway on a bunch of the other topics that actually mattered to the city before someone told them it probably should. And what I said then, and what I'm going to say to all of you now, is that we have to stop pretending that houses are all a community is when we're talking about low-income communities. Because I know that those of you who live in Squirrel Hill, those of you who live in Lawrenceville, those of you who live in Bloomfield, those of you who live in Point Breeze, when people ask you, "What do you like about your community?" You have something to say other than "my house is there." And people in low-income communities deserve the same thing. They deserve to be able to say, "I meet up with my friends and neighbors at the farm every Thursday night." They deserve to say, "We have green space. We have fresh food. We have walkable neighborhoods. We have things that matter to us. We have neighbors who care about us." And they deserve that every bit as much as high-income Pittsburghers do. And they certainly deserve that a hell of a lot more, a lot more than they deserve to have half-million-dollar houses built where farms are. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tiara Collins, I saw you come in.
Good morning. And Tiara Collins, she's here. I'm here as a board member for the Pittsburgh Food Policy Council, but more importantly, I'm here as a mother. And I'm going to talk about being a mother and what Ebony is, Farmer Girl Eb. She's a mom. And she's a mom taking care of a whole community. And I'm going to make this clear to y'all. As a mom of five children, and not only as a mom of five children, but as a mother who fed her kids' hungry friends who came to her house every day of the week to eat because they didn't have food at home. This is what Farmer Girl Eb is doing. She's feeding our brown kids who are hungry because there's no food at home. And this is what I need y'all to understand. We're not here because, oh, this is a, this is, oh, we want this property for housing. Just like the young lady who just spoke, there's lots of properties. Go find another property. Because this property right here is being used to feed our hungry black kids. See, I didn't know what I was going to say when I came here because I didn't write anything. But as I got here and rushing to get here, it's all coming to me. Why this farm is here? This farm is here because it's feeding our children. And you keep saying that y'all want to make a city that is livable and is welcoming to us, brown people, female. Then prove that. This farm is going to stay because it's feeding our children. I don't know if any of you know what it's like to have to feed a child who's hungry because their mother is out there on crack or lost her job or can't afford to feed them because the system is unfair to us anyways. But I know what that system is and I know what it is to feed a child who's hungry. And as of right now, we still have brown children every day going to be hungry because there's not enough food. So if you have a farm that's providing free food to someone's child, why would you take that away? Have a blessed day.
Thank you. Our next speaker, our next speaker is Helen Gearhart.
Thank you. I am here on behalf of the Climate Action Plan Justice Coalition and a volunteer member with the Food Justice Fund Committee. I am strongly urging that the lots on which Food for the Soul Community Farm are rooted be sold to Ebony Lunsford Evans in conformance with the tri-party agreement that states that this land be sold to the current leasehold. As a longtime supporter and manager and volunteer with community gardens and farms, farms and gardens such as Food for the Soul build intergenerational learning and long-term relationships focused on mutual care to support community health, food justice and long-term resilience. As national food systems break down and climate change impacts escalate, community gardens and farms will become ever more vital, especially for groups that have and will be most impacted by food apartheid, systemic discrimination and environmental racism. Most surely, such farms and gardens are of highest and best use that should not be placed in opposition to fair and affordable housing. As a long-term organizer for both housing justice and food justice, our city planning should reflect the reality that we are an ecosystem of deeply interconnected resources, needs and mutual giving. We need long-term policies, dedicated funding and land use models such as the Three Rivers Agricultural Land Initiative, a community land trust that protects and preserves urban agriculture and lands in perpetuity and provides the long-term security to support the labor and the material and emotional investments that community leaders such as Ebony Lunsford Evans have shared with our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. President, I apologize. I need to go. I didn't, I have the DPW week. I just thank you, everybody. These testimonies are very compelling and I look forward to talking more. Can I register eye votes for?
For the final bills?
For final bills?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joanna Demme.
Good afternoon or good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Jo Demme. I'm here in support of Farmer Girl Eb, Food for the Soul Farm in Manchester. I'm here as a Northside resident from Perry Hilltop. I'm here as the former executive director of the Pittsburgh Food Policy Council, which has worked closely with Farmer Girl Eb over the years. This is not a fight between farms and housing. Ultimately, we need a city where residents can live and eat. And there's plenty of land, as folks have said. In reality, there's already a successful farm on the site. Now, if you haven't had a garden, I don't expect you to understand what it means to move a farm. But if you've had a garden, you know what it takes, how much time, energy and care to create healthy, productive soil and get food to grow, not to mention getting volunteers and community involvement. As you've heard, this farm represents a major investment, not just of money, but passion and time from community members. It's not something you can pick up and move. I'm here to support Farmer Girl Eb because she hasn't had a seat at the table as key stakeholder in her community, in the community where the farm is located. It is the role of the community group to communicate with all stakeholders in their community, especially those of development interest, so they understand where they stand. I'm going to repeat that, so they understand where they stand. This hasn't happened. It is city council and the city's job to mediate conversations when there are different development interests for a particular site. That hasn't happened. While the lease was temporary, the success and significance of the investment means a city must find a long-term solution to secure the site for Food for the Soul Farm. I stand with Farmer Girl Eb because of all she can contribute, providing healthy food and education and a vision for community self-sufficiency. She's a leader in urban agriculture in the city, offering a critical resource, especially as food prices continue to rise, even at our biggest discount stores. While Farmer Girl Eb may not be able to feed everyone, though certainly she would if she could. The tools, the skills, and as you've heard, the inspiration she gives her community is having and will have, continue to have a long-lasting impact. I support Farmer Girl Eb because she hasn't, she shouldn't have, excuse me. I support Farmer Girl Eb because she shouldn't have to fight for her dignity or for the right to continue her work. We've all witnessed this work firsthand and her impact speaks for itself. I'm asking you to work with Farmer Girl Eb to ensure she has a seat at the table and receives transparent and frequent communication. She understands where she stands and that you work to protect Food for the Soul Farm. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last registered speaker is Jonathan Walmack. Is Jonathan Walmack with us? If not, that exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time, provide your name and neighborhood for the record.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. That's the high-rise at the top of Bedford. I come today to speak about some of the politicians that came to our building, especially Pateek the magistrate. Now, Mr. Pateek spoke to me. I didn't want to speak to him, but I turned around and I said to him, "You are the reason, Mr. Pateek, why we in this building, Katie Rivers, are being beaten with hammers and sticks. You let the mother still live in the building, but the police say that you and Arbor are dropping the ball. I am being threatened by the bad actor that beat the men, beat the woman and the daughter and mother with a hammer and another resident with a stick." And when I went to the manager, I said, "Clear warning. I am being threatened. I am afraid for my life." She said, "Don't say that." I said, "She is threatening me, harassing me, stalking me." She threw her big breasts up in the air, "Oh, she don't talk to me like that." But about months ago, I think it's about a month ago, they heard this bad actor saying, "What did you say to my mother?" And when they stood up, she had the manager by her neck. They all tried to get in there, but they were both on the floor rolling in front of the door. And the bad actor was calling, "Get it off of me! Get it off of me!" She said, "I didn't hit her. I'm just restraining her." So I sweep in the building early in the morning. So when I saw the manager, I went to her and I said, "When I told you that I was afraid and how she talks to me, you told me when you put your big breasts up in the ear that she don't talk to me like you, like that." I said, "Well, but she grabbed you by your neck." She said, "No, she didn't. No, she didn't. I want you to know that I cannot get food. I can't get, I cannot get the food bank for my husband who's crippled. He cannot walk and she's insisting that he must come down. He can't even hold, they have vouchers. He can't even hold a- He can't even hold, they have vouchers, he can't even hold a voucher." When I tried to explain to her that you are supposed to give his honor and respect, she became very loud. She's very loud, she's brass, she's, I mean, you wouldn't believe. And I wanna know, how is the administration of Arbor running your food banks? How is that, they got, how could that be? Why did that manager have to run? We had volunteers. Where did she come from to she could take over the food bank and tell me that I cannot get my husband's food? We've been married for forty-one years. He's crippled because he was a city employee, three of them from asbestos head stroke. One died, that was out there in Larmont. I told Stanley Low, "I deserve to be treated with respect, and I deserve that food."
Next speaker, please.
My name is Lisa Freeman, owner of Freeman Family Farm in Greenhouse. I wanna thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm just gonna, just without any notes, just speaking from my heart. Counselor Coghill, Gross, Teresa Kelsmith, Strasburger, Counselor Warwick, I don't really think you're a white supremacist, that's not the message of this, but I did hear a Requiem come on, and she talked about white supremacy. That's a real issue. And I'm thinking about every time people have come from Manchester, it's been a group of angry black people, generally. Ninety-nine percent of black people have been marginalized in Manchester. And unfortunately, the counselors, you're complicit. You don't realize it, but you're complicit. The whole issue at hand is that Councilman R. Daniel Lovell and LaShawn Burton Falk, MCC Executive Director and Planning Board Chairperson, have been pushing Piott and Esplanade down the throat of city council, school district, county, everybody. Well, now they're seven hundred and forty million dollars for our darn merry-go-round. But what happened in the meantime was now Manchester, which is a historically black neighborhood, is pushed out of being designated food desert. Why? Because ten people who live in Esplanade and that seven hundred and forty million-dollar development were no longer low-income. So when they talk about affordable housing, I don't know what they're talking about because six hundred dollars, six hundred thousand dollars is not affordable housing. This, wait a minute, wait, don't take my time up. So this garden they're talking about, oh, shoot, they came after me first. We don't want an effin' farm on our garden. We, in our farm, this is an abuse of power. We don't have USDA anymore. Piott has not given us any kind of benefits, no here. Let's help what's down here. Who's gonna feed Manchester? We're here. And do you think this is because I just love doing this? I wanna bring it to you. Six thousand one hundred eighty-four dollars and ninety-four cents, that's my city taxes. Two thousand, two hundred eleven dollars and seventy-three dollars, that's my county taxes. Eight thousand dollars to provide my Manchester, the Northside, with free food? I do this to help my neighbors. Where is our benefit, Mr. R. Daniel Lovell? What are you doing for our community that no longer has a low-income designation?
Thank you.
We're here.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we'll turn to the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilman Charlin, Chair of Human Resources.
You not here?
No, the President.
Thank you. Councilman Carrco, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Anthony Coghill presents Bill eighteen forty-six, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety to Enter Into an Emergency Services Provider Agreement or Agreements with University of Pittsburgh Medical Center and Vitalent at No Cost to the City for Professional Services Related to the Stalking and Use of Emergency Medical Supplies for Blood Transfusions on City Emergency Medical Services Vehicles at No Cost to the City.
And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Deborah Elgroes presents Bill eighteen forty-seven, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of RPC Video in the Amount of Six Thousand One Hundred Ninety-eight Dollars to Extend the City Channel Control Room Video Switcher Warranty by One Year.
And Councilman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Kahari Mosley presents Bill eighteen forty-eight, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance to Execute a Quit Claim Deed or Deeds and Any Other Necessary or Appropriate Documents, Agreements, and Instruments Convaying as-is all of the City's Right, Title, and Interest, if any, in Block Twenty-Five P, Lots Eleven and Twelve in the Second Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, Twenty-Six-O-Eight Penn Avenue, Council District One, to the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh for Consideration of One Dollar contingent upon the Mayor and Director of the Department of Finance, first entering into a Cooperation Agreement or Agreements with the URA, setting forth the rights and obligations of the City and the URA relating to these initial conveyances and further setting forth the rights and obligations of the City and the URA relating to the subsequent disposition of this property to a third party at no cost to the City.
And Councilwoman Kelsmith, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services. She stepped out. Councilwoman Strasburger, thank you.
No new papers, Mr. President.
I thought she had two. I don't see them, but. Councilwoman Kelsmith?
I don't have any.
She does not, I apologize. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Erica Strasburger presents Bill eighteen forty-nine, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Cohen Law Group for Expert Legal Services in Connection with a Litigation Matter for an Amount Not to Exceed Eight Thousand Two Hundred Forty-seven Dollars and Eighty-Cents Over One Year.
And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure. Thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger.
Mr. President, thank you.
Councilwoman Barbara Warwick presents Bill eighteen fifty, Resolution Amending Resolution Four-Sixty-Seven of Two Thousand Twenty-Two, titled Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Apply for a Grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Multimodal Transportation Fund for the South Twenty-first Street Complete Green Street Project and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed One Million Thirty-Six Thousand Four Hundred Twenty-two Dollars to Decrease the Grant Amount Except the Grant Award and Authorize Necessary Expenditures.
And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Bobby Wilson presents Bill eighteen fifty-one, Resolution Approving a Conditional Use Application under the Pittsburgh Code Title Nine, Zoning, Article Five, Chapter Nine-Eleven, Section Nine-Eleven, Point Oh-Four, Point A, Point Six-Four, to the Neighborhood Academy Property Owner for Authorization to Construct Additions to a School, Elementary or Secondary Use at Seven-O-Nine North Aiken Avenue, Parcel Eighty-One S-Sixty-Three, Zoned Single Unit Detached Residential Low Density Tenth Ward, Council District Number Nine. And Bill eighteen fifty-four, Resolution Establishing a Task Force on Sustainable Funding for the Pittsburgh Land Bank to Develop Recommendations for Long-Term Financial Stability.
And for myself, I have two.
Councilman R. Daniel Lovell presents Bill eighteen fifty-two, Communication from Jake Pollock, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting to City Council the Attached Status Update from the Grants Office for the Week Ended May Sixteenth, Two Thousand Twenty-Five. And Bill eighteen fifty-three, Communication from Jake Pollock, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting the City of Pittsburgh Quarterly Financial and Performance Report for the Period Ending March Thirty-First, Two Thousand Twenty-Five.
And we need a motion to read, receive, and file.
Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Before going on to reports of committee for final action, I believe Councilwoman Gross wants to make a motion.
Uh, Councilman, yes. I didn't check in with Councilman Mosley about his new papers, so I wanted to defer to him, and he's not, I'm not able to reach him. So I'd like to motion to withdraw the introduction of his papers.
Which was Bill eighteen forty-eight.
Yes, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve, eighteen forty-eight will not be formally introduced this morning. That takes us to reports of committee for final action, beginning with Councilwoman Erica Strasburger presenting the Committee of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Erica Strasburger presents Bill eighteen thirty-eight, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for May Fourteenth, Two Thousand Twenty-Five, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill eighteen oh-two, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Lawi Ong in an Amount Not to Exceed Eight Thousand Nine Hundred Seventy-One Dollars and Seventeen Cent over One Year in Full and Final Settlement of a Claim for Damage to His Vehicle from an Accident with a City Police Vehicle on July Twenty-Ninth, Two Thousand Twenty-Four. Bill eighteen oh-three, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Harry Howe Care of Stefania Jeffrey Manager Three Management in an Amount Not to Exceed Three Thousand Four Hundred Ninety-three Dollars over One Year in Full and Final Settlement of a Claim for Damage to Rental Property at the Corner of Koschusko Way and Letico Street by a City of Pittsburgh Environmental Services Vehicle on August Twenty-Fourth, Two Thousand Twenty-Four.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills, are there any discussion on the bill? If not, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lovell, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bill having received a lead required number of votes is passed finally. That moves us to Councilwoman Barbara Warwick presenting the Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Councilwoman Barbara Warwick presents Bill eighteen thirty-nine, Report of the Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for May Fourteenth, Two Thousand Twenty-Five, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill eighteen oh-four, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Finance and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter Into Certain Temporary Construction Easements and Permanent Right-of-Way Acquisitions on Certain Properties in the Second and Sixth Wards of the City in order to Advance the Liberty Avenue Highway Safety Improvement Program. Costs for these temporary construction easements and right-of-way acquisitions shall not exceed six hundred eighty-nine thousand nine hundred seventy dollars reimbursable at ninety percent for the first ninety thousand dollars and reimbursable at eighty percent for the remaining five hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred seventy dollars. Bill eighteen oh-five, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement or Agreements with Duquesne Light Company for Costs Associated with the Smithfield Street Phase One Project, where Duquesne Light Company would be responsible for paying one hundred percent of the actual expenses involved in certain work to be described in the agreements. Bill eighteen oh-six, Resolution Authorizing Acceptance by the City of Pittsburgh of the Dedication of Portions of Auburn Street, Coleido Drive, and Princeton Place at No Cost to the City Located in the Larimer East Liberty Phase One Plan of Lots, as recorded in the Allegheny County Department of Real Estate in Plan Book Volume Two Eighty-Three, Page Twenty-Two, in the Twelfth Ward, Ninth Council District of the City of Pittsburgh.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills, are there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lovell, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bill having received a lead required number of votes is passed finally. That moves us to Councilperson Robert Charlin presenting the Committee of Human Resources.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Robert Charlin presents Bill eighteen forty, Report of the Committee on Human Resources for May Fourteenth, Two Thousand Twenty-Five, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill seventeen ninety-seven, Resolution Amending Resolution Number Eighteen of Two Thousand Twenty-Five, Effective February Third, Two Thousand Twenty-Five, which authorized the Mayor and the Director of Human Resources and Civil Service to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement with UPMC Benefits Management Services, Inc., doing business as work partners for services relating to providing third-party administrative services of the City of Pittsburgh's Workers Compensation Program for Costs Not to Exceed Five Million Two Thousand Seven Hundred Sixty-four Dollars over the course of four years by correctly restating the amounts to be incurred annually with no change to the total amount.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill, is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lovell, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bill having received a lead required number of votes is passed finally. And finally, Councilman Kahari Mosley presenting the Committee of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Kahari Mosley presents Bill eighteen forty-two, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for May Fourteenth, Two Thousand Twenty-Five, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill seventeen ninety-eight, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement or Agreements with Pittsburgh Water for Costs Associated with the Liberty Avenue HSIP Project, where Pittsburgh Water would be responsible for paying one hundred percent of the actual expenses involved in certain work to be described in the agreement. Bill seventeen ninety-nine, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement or Agreements with Pittsburgh Water for Costs Associated with the Smithfield Street Phase One Project, where Pittsburgh Water would be responsible for paying one hundred percent of the actual expenses involved in certain work to be described in the agreements. And Bill eighteen hundred, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement or Agreements with Pittsburgh Water for Costs Associated with the Penn Avenue Phase Two Project, where Pittsburgh Water would be responsible for paying one hundred percent of the actual expenses involved in certain work to be described in the agreements.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills, are there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr.-[1799.42] Mr. Mosley? Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick? Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Lavelle President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bill having received a lead required number of votes is passed finally. And now that takes us to motions and resolutions. Anything for members, starting with Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you. I missed some of the comments today, but I heard enough that, um, I just think that, first of all, I did talk to the women's, the women on council, because I think one of the things we need to do is identify a better plan for the farms that we have. I put legislation in years ago, it was during COVID, I think, um, when I saw people waiting in line for food and then to get turned away. And it made, it just made me think, what could we do as a government so people aren't so dependent upon us, um, to give, get food? And one of the things I did was put in some farm legislation. I think Councilwoman Gross and Councilman Coghill started working on some things in her district and his district with it. And I just think, like, we don't have very clear guidelines and very clear rules. And I think some of the things that we need to do is to sit down. One of the things I just spoke with Ebony about was, and I do want to say, all the comments I heard, Councilwoman Lavelle did sit down with Ebony and Lisa in my office, I have the photos, and, um, tried to work through some things. And I think sometimes we, we need to show people how to work through things with us, you know, in different ways. Because I think right now, the climate is just to be angry and to go right to social media and start, you know, trashing people when talking about people. And that's not always the best way to get things done. And I do want to say that I appreciate that you took the time in the meeting. I watched you work with people. But I do think that this has something really important. It's, it's, I don't think it's the development issue. I think it's feeling pushed out, similar to what the Hill District, what my family felt like when they were pushed out of the Hill District when they, um, tore down our house to build the arena. And now the arena's gone. And, you know, I think that it's the feeling of feeling important and, um, not feeling like you have no power in your community. And I, and I hope that we could try to come together. And I do think, I talked with Ebony, she's willing to sit down and meet, and I would love for us to sit down one more time, if you don't mind, Councilwoman Lavelle. But I think one of the people that need to be at the table is the developer, because maybe he can offer something that we couldn't even imagine. Um, in our district, one of the people we have that I just shared with the women on council is, um, the person who does the landscape architect for Janoski's Farms. Um, and some of the employees live in Sheridan, and they're offering help, too. So if we could take up help from people that are willing to help us, you know, that have this expertise, have equipment, have knowledge and, and funding, maybe that will help us. But we also have money for the Sheridan Park Master Plan, which is where we were going to put in a farm and, you know, renovate the pool and do some work there, start the master plan. My conversation with Director Hornstein, although brief, is that they, they don't believe that they're going to be able to open the Sheridan Pool this year because it needs so much work. I was a little bit frustrated because the money's been sitting there, they could have done the work. But he, I think the idea is to move the pool, so that's a much bigger project. And so if we do that, that money's going to sit there this year, and so we might be able to use it for something like this or some different. But I think it, it all starts with us having a conversation, and I also think that the women's caucus should sit down and, and go over the whole plans for the, and we'll include you guys, okay? For the plans for, um, for, for farms and, and for what we're doing with the Food Policy Council and what we expect, you know, of them and how others who participated, you know, are struggling now. And I just think, like, and Lisa mentioning that she's paying taxes and, and, you know, those are things that we could, we could put into place that they get some kind of discount if you're providing food for the, for the peop, for the public. So I think those are conversations we all have to have, so I am going to ask the women to meet. But Councilwoman Lavelle, this is your district, so I'm going to be respectful, and I do want to thank you for the meeting, and I want to thank you for agreeing to meet again. And, um, I do think that we need to bring some developers, and particularly this developer to the table, to have a meeting with us, because you, you don't know, maybe, you know, he hadn't thought about some different things that he could do or some, maybe you did, you know, I'm sure you exhausted every opportunity, but I think meeting Ebony is, you know, ma, it makes you want to change things. She does such great work in the community and such great work with the kids and such great work with the, with the residents. Um, and not just her, but, you know, Lisa's doing great things on the north side and others are doing great work across the city that aren't even noticed right now. So let's sit down and try to figure this out together. That's, I just want to, I want to assure the public that we're going to work through it, but I want to also assure them that you did sit down and you did have a meeting and you were working through some of those things. So let's try to figure this out. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. May I respond?
Please.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's your district, I'm sorry.
No, no, no worries. Um, so just to give a little bit of context here, one, this is not about not supporting Farmer Girl Eb. I think the work she does is phenomenal, um, which is why the Land Bank has actually transferred her parcels to continue her work. The URA has sold her parcels and property to be able to continue her work. The URA gave her a two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant as part of the Avenues of Hope Program. So we fully support her work. However, in this context, the Manchester Plan was formally adopted by the city. In that plan, it calls for an entire section of the community, not just her parcels, to be built and used as affordable housing. The Manchester Citizens Corporation was working on developing, in affordable housing development for that site, then COVID hit. So obviously, everything got shut down. During that time, you're absolutely correct, you did introduce legislation, people were concerned about where's food coming from, et cetera, et cetera. She then applied for an opportunity through the Adopt-A-Lot Program to farm on those, that parcel within Manchester. And through the Adopt-A-Lot Program, it's a temporary program, so she signed a temporary lease that expires July of this month, which is why, in part, why we're now here where we are. Manchester Citizens Corporation has since still begun trying to move forward with doing the housing development. In fact, they're in conversations, well, they're further in conversations, but they've been working with Pittsburgh Scholar House to actually do an affordable housing development on that site whereby they would be targeting women with children who are going back to school and trying to embed their lives. Um, and so it'd actually be a couple of hundred units of housing on the site, not as some indicated, one or two houses. And so now there's a tension there between how do you deal with the initial plans of doing the affordable housing with someone who has invested time and energy, sweat equity, financial, financially to a site? And that's the tension that we're up against. Um, you were correct, when we met last year, I forget exactly when, but it was last year sometime, and we initially met with her, I offered to say, well, what if I can find you other parcels within the neighborhood that you could actually potentially own? Because you don't own this site, it's owned by the city, it's a temporary lease. And she did, as she indicated today, say, well, she didn't understand that this was a temporary lease that she had agreed to. Um, otherwise, she may not have done this. Um, so, but at the time, she also said no, that she didn't want other sites, she wanted to stay where she was. Um, and so that's sort of why we are where we are. I will also say, to your point of having a better way of dealing with this, that is correct. Um, because we shouldn't be using the Adopt-A-Lot process for people who want to have permanent farms, right? That's a flawed process, we, that does need fixed. I've had that conversation with the administration, they, they, I believe, are actually working on creating a different way for those who want to have permanent farms to acquire land from the city. I'm not exactly sure where it stands, but I know we've had that conversation some months ago. Um, so that's where all of this is, yes, be more than willing to have another meeting with you and Farmer Girl Eb, as well as potentially Manchester Cities Corporation, who's leading the affordable housing efforts for the site. But that's sort of the context of why we are where we are.
I just think sometimes we get in, we all dig our heels in because it gets frustrating, you know, it gets frustrating, you see things on social media and you're trying to do things right, you're trying to help people, and meanwhile, you're getting trashed for it and, um, and things are getting misconstrued and that sort of thing. I just think, like, we all need to take a step back and look at how we can address this a little bit, and I want to thank you for your willingness to do that.
No problem. Anything else from members?
Can I just, you could say something about what happened at Squirrel Hill?
Wasn't planning on it, no.
Okay.
I've said what I need to say.
Okay, then I'm gonna say, I'm not gonna say.
Yeah, police are investigating, I saw her post, I thought it was well said.
Yeah, I, can I just say that, I do want to say that when those things happen, it, it, you know, everybody can say, oh, it's happening to that community, or, oh, this is happening to this community, and, you know, hate is over here and hate is over there. But we're all spewing hate through this whole election process, number one. Number two is, you know, we need to bring us all back to the middle, but because this kind of stuff eventually hurts all of us. I mean, eventually, all of us fit in some category, right? So I don't want to see us doing this kind of hateful stuff, you know, I, I just, I worry about where we are as, as a city right now. I, I used to worry just about the country on a national level, and there were things I could only do on the local level. Now I worry about us on, on every level. Um, I just hope that we get to be, we get, council can bring more to the middle and, and make people realize this, you know, any kind of hate or anger towards anybody is never okay. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross and Councilwoman Coghill?
Thank you. It's been, it's been a long conversation about urban ag during my tenure on council. If I'm not mistaken, council had rejected amending the urban ag code before I served on council. There was an urban ag code that was trying, an amendment to expand it that had failed. Um, and we were able to positively amend and expand the urban ag code to include things like beekeeping and chickenkeeping, um, back in two thousand fourteen, if I'm not mistaken, it might have been two thousand fourteen or two thousand fifteen. So it's been a solid ten years, um, of working with communities, working with advocates around how to expand not only food production, but food processing, storage, distribution, and the entire food system. So this council, um, finally amended the ARPA allocations to create the Food Justice Fund. But again, at the beginning of COVID, working with several council members, we also launched the City Farms Program, um, that was, uh, we didn't, really took off, I think, finally in two thousand twenty-two or so, when we convinced the Parks and Rec Department to hire a half-time farmer. So we literally have a city employee, um, half-time, there is another position we're trying to add money to, so we could have two-part-time, who is proactively going out to community gardens to test soil, to look for soil amendments, to create stronger farm plans, to provide resources like soil, saplings, seedlings, fencing, um, and those are, I think, what we also need more of. Um, it's been a, a long time in developing the relationship with the Food Policy Council and other active organizations to try to look at including, as was mentioned a little bit in public comment, um, where in all of the city are the kind of, what, I want to use the word arable, like, what are the, what are the sites in each of parts of the city that are farmable, where food can be grown? Um, and we should be looking as well, I think, proactively to figure out where also is our affordable manufacturing, because those places have been lost. Where is also affordable food storage? Where also can we use our transportation network and support our small stores? Um, and these are all, to me, economic development, not just community development. And they're an integral part of why cities exist, to make sure that food can move around and people can have access to, to buying, growing, creating, selling food. Um, and so we, we have made progress, but clearly, we still have a long way to go, um, to making sure that we avoid these kinds of conflicts, because we know from many studies that on our poorest households, food and rent, um, are both sometimes equal burdens in costs. Um, and, and that's just more true every day as prices and inflation go up. Um, and so sometimes houses, you know, households, families can become housing insecure because of food insecurity as well. Um, and so we really, they are, they are equal risks and equal opportunities for us, I think, to do better. But I also do want to say how, um, in the work that we've done, we have invested in, in, um, a number of community gardens in my district and created, helped to create new ones, invested and purchased, um, now for, for a handful of years, um, the things to help them succeed. And I like to remind everyone that sometimes these volunteer organizations, we've all seen them wax and wane in their capacities. Sometimes it's the land that's needed, sometimes it is some resources, like actual things like sixteen cubic yards of compost or deer-proof fencing. But sometimes it's also just people power and the organizing, helping them find more volunteers if their volunteers have kind of run out of steam or they've lost their way. So we, as the city, we have that. We have land. We have resources, like things we can finance. But we also have people, and I've certainly gone out and worked on, um, plantings and, um, cleanup days at gardens with my staff, and I appreciate, and certainly my staff have done more hours than I have, and I appreciate them doing that. Um, and we have things like trucks that can deliver things. So, um, we're providing, and we did get things to Councilman Coghill, we did get a pickup truck for our city farms team, so that they're able to deliver things like wood chips and support those community gardens so that they succeed. So the goal should be that we are growing more food each year, whether that's because they're getting the supplies that they need or there's more land under cultivation. And it does create new neighbors. And representing a district that has changed so much in population, more so than I think other council districts around the city in the last ten years, it's critically important. That is the way we keep Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh, is that one degree of separation, right? We're not six degrees of separation. Sometimes I joke that we're like half a degree of separation, not, you know, less than one. But when you have lots of newcomers and when families get broken up because of displacement or gentrification, you lose that network. You lose it, the, a safety net. Um, and we need to fight against the rising land costs. As land costs go up, we find ourselves trying to fight against, uh, developments and sometimes outstate developers or these LLCs we've talked about before that are, um, gobbling up the shared spaces in our neighborhoods, and it's really hard to fight against. Um, and, because we'll never have as much money or move as fast as this, the corporate market. Um, so we need to protect the ones that are there, whether that's city facilities, that's park property, or whether it's looking ahead and getting ahead of the market to set land aside. Um, and so those are some of the conversations that I've been having with the network of people who, who work on gardening in the city and work on community farming. Um, and so I really appreciate their work to create these spaces. So, um, there's a lot of good work, but I feel like we've gotten some of our homework in place, but as a city council, right, we need to now kind of move it forward so that it is, um, more effectuated. So I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Councilwoman Coghill?
Thank you, Mr. President. So Manchester has Farmer Eb, and we have Farmer Deb on council here. And, uh, you know, over the past three or four years, Deb and I have been working on, you know, city farms and multiple things, and, and I see the interest, I see the excitement in communities and, you know, that, and, and the fact that we have now a part-time, I think, I think he's full-time now, but I'm not sure on that. And, and actually, we have a vehicle, you know, so, so it's really been great and they've been very helpful in, you know, things that I've been doing with the orchard and everything. So, so, it, so it was really nice to hear, you know, this community come down, Manchester come down today and speak to this. And, um, and thank you, uh, Mr. President, for clearing it up. I figured there was two sides to the story. And I guess, I, I guess I have a question, is, um, that I, I'm sure they want to renew the lease, I guess, is that what they were asking? Or do they, they want to outright buy that property? And is it something that's going to be coming in front of us or in the near future, or that's all I wanted to know?
Sure, so two points to clarity. Um, one, of the thirty-eight registered speakers, it was only one from Manchester.
Okay.
That was Lisa Freeman, um, who spoke last. Um, everyone else was from around, most, yeah, mostly from Teresa's district. Um, so we don't know, which is the issue. Um, her lease expires in July. Um, she could certainly apply to renew the lease. She could apply to acquire the property, which I believe what she wants to do, um, is to actually own the property. The challenge is, if she owns it as it is right now, you then wouldn't be able to do the planned housing development. So there needs to, so we need to figure out what the workaround is.
Yeah, so there's, there is a planned housing development, and there always has been. So, um, and she knew that going into the lease agreement through COVID.
She says that was not explained to her, that she did not understand that, so I don't want to.
Well, I'm confident you'll work it all out, so, uh, yeah. So anything, anything for me, let me know.
All right, thank you. Anything else? If not, our meeting announcement is this afternoon at one-thirty, council will meet and hold our regular standing committee meeting. Speaker registration will close at twelve-thirty. To register to speak at this afternoon's meeting, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage or call the clerk's office at four one two two five five twenty-one thirty-eight. So now we need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.